Well, this is the Wednesday, November seventeenth Town Council meeting, regular scheduled meeting. Notice has been on the website and this will be a hybrid meeting. And there's a Zoom link that's listed. It's listed on the website, but it is, you can pull it up right off the town website. It's meeting ID eight four two one zero zero four six six four seven passcode five three two three eight four. We are going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance and we have the Boy Scouts from Troop forty-five at St. Ace here. And why don't you guys come up to the, up to the dais and we'll get up and say the pledge. Steve, you want to kick us off?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. Step over to your, step over to your dad and, and actually Steve, if you want to just step up to the mic and just, I asked Steve Proster, who is the head of Troop forty-five, just to say a few words about activities and what they've been doing in the last couple of weeks. So go ahead, Steve.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Steve, and thank you, Council, for the invitation. Really happy to be here tonight. As Steve mentioned, we are Troop forty-five at St. Ace. There was a troop there for more than fifty years, which sort of went away in the nineteen eighties. We restarted the program three years ago and between our Cub Scout and Scout Program now, we have just over thirty scouts from age kindergarten through ninth grade. So really happy to be here. We did just conclude a spaghetti dinner, Meal Kit fundraiser in partnership with Walter Stewart's to raise money to buy more equipment, camping and cooking equipment for the Scouts because we're growing. We have an archery practice weekend coming up first weekend in December and at Hoyt Scout Camp, which is in Reading. And we've got two weekends of winter camping, one in cabins and possibly one in tents in January at Hoyt and Reading as well. So, but again, I have a flyer here, which is some websites and some contact info that I'll leave with Steve. If anybody has any interest in learning more about either of the two units, we'd love to hear from you. We're always working with various partners in town, the Land Trust, Waviney, even St. Ace for some of the service projects that we do locally. So I think between our troop and pack and the other two troops and other two packs in town, you know, scouting is very healthy in New Canaan. We're always looking for opportunities to serve the community, both here locally as well as the surrounding towns. And again, would like to get to know you better. So, you know, please do reach out and say hello and look for us in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve. Appreciate it. Thanks for all you're doing in the community. And thank you, Scouts, for coming. Really appreciate it. Good luck in January. It's gonna be cold out there, so. Okay, Penny, can you call the roll?
Absolutely. Robin Bates-Mason.
Yeah.
Rita Bettino. Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Timske.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman. Mike Morrow.
Here.
Maria Norton.
Virtually.
Kim Norton.
Here.
Virtually. Hillary Orman.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Kenny Young. Right here, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Penny. All right, next up, we have a couple of items that we're gonna add to the agenda. So can, Mark, you wanna make a motion to add a couple of items?
Yeah, motion to add the oh yeah, motion to add the police station discussion to our agenda where I think we're gonna take a a vote on, on that straw poll, excuse me, and also a motion to add the executive session regarding the premium pay for employees of the town. Two motions. I need a second.
Just to hand to the general, that was Tom seconded and all in favor. All right. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving on to minutes, approval of minutes for October twentieth, regular meeting. Everybody get a chance to review those. Are there any changes, corrections, additions? Seeing none, will approve by unanimous consent. Thank you very much. Number three, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the Town Council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are required to state their names, shoot address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to numbers of speakers. Would anybody in the public like to address the council? Seeing none, moving on. For selectmen update, Kevin Moynihan is here tonight. Welcome, Kevin. Always good to see you.
See you all. Welcome, new members. And I'll give you the same update I gave to the Board, the Board of Finance last week. COVID, we're having an uptick, as you know personally. We have, actually so far this weekend, Wednesday, we have twenty-five cases. So this, again, is primarily from people traveling, but in this case of the twenty-five cases, there are three families. So there's a lot of family transition going on. Once a member, someone comes back from traveling and passes it on. We're doing very well with our vaccination clinics. Last week, as you know, we had a over a thousand kids at the high school. Today, we did a country school and next, after Thanksgiving, we're doing St. Louis's kids and we're doing daily vaccinations at the mine cottage for for adults and those who are eligible still over sixty-five and those who are compromised and we're doing the twice a week COVID testing at Perrin House. So but we're still doing well in terms of, you know, nobody who's vaccinated is getting seriously ill. We were concerned this week when we saw that up in Canaan, Connecticut, eight people died in a nursing home and virtually all the residents were positive and most, half of the staff was positive. So it's still a dangerous thing in nursing homes. And so Capital Projects, as you know, the high school roof is just finished. The playhouse roof, as you can see, is finishing. The CHP project at Saks is underway and the high school planning is underway. EverSource Gas two thousand two twenty-two expansion on Elm Street, Pine Street, Row Street is in, in planning stage and as you can see out here, the aquarium water replacement still continues nine PM to one PM daily and the recent, recently get it done by Christmas. So that's all in the works. Working on the playoff plan. We got some new, new, new interesting players. So hopefully, we're gonna get a plan together to come to January with the budget process to begin to ask for funding for the necessary repairs to the building. And the Waviney House study is working its way to a December report before the budgets process starts. We'll talk about the Police Department building process. And but now I've promised I'm gonna have at my desk by December one, the, the Ponys Ridge cell tower is just about completing their engineering work and it'll come to the Board of Selectmen. And for ninety-day review, community review before it goes to the Siding Council, we also are getting a lot of interest and we will expect to be announcing two or three more cell towers in December. So two twenty Elm Street, last night, the P and Z Commission approved the eight twenty-four and I understand the Board of Ed will take it up next Monday night. So in our executive session tonight, we'll look to hopefully approve the bonding so that we can proceed with the closing on that early December. And our funds, you're gonna give an update and then, as you know, is Linda here? I guess not. Our unfortunate sad news about our excellent CFO deciding to take a job with Norwalk as their CFO for their Board of Education. Everyone who's worked for Linda, he's been an amazing talent and someone we're very sorry to lose. Tried to keep him, but it's impossible when you're getting forty percent increase in compensation. He's a very valuable person and Norwalk will benefit from him. We're gonna have a transition here. He's unfortunately gonna leave in early December. And not a lot of CFOs out there in the municipal space, but we'll hopefully find the right person. And again, Linda's done an amazing job. I thought he'd be, is Linda doing, coming tonight? When you see him, I thought he would be here that you can congratulate him and thank him for his work on behalf of the town.
Yeah, he sent a, he sent a very, very nice email to, to the town bodies and, and very eloquent as always, and he's gonna be so missed. What a great guy. There he is.
There he is.
There he is.
I knew he had a financial update on here, so I was. You wanna come down and you'll be on the agenda a little bit later, but again, I just said how sad we are to lose you. And what an incredible job you've done, both first as Budget Director and then as CFO. And why don't you tell them what you're gonna be doing at Norwalk? You were approved last night by their Board of Education?
Yes, so the Norwalk Board of Ed met, met last night to approve the position, as I said in the note. And I shared with Kevin, it wasn't something that I was looking for. I wasn't, I wasn't out there looking. It's kind of interesting how it all happened. I know Tom, the CFO, who's retiring from having worked in Norwalk. And so I saw in the paper that he was retiring and I just sent him a note, congratulations, you know, you're big shoes to fill. And he said, thank you. And I thought that would be it. And the very next day, I got a call from the Mayor of Norwalk and said, hey, did you know Tom's retiring? I said, I did. And then, you know, he was just saying hello and whatnot. And then about half an hour later, I got a call from the Superintendent of Norwalk and she says, do you know he's retiring? Yeah, I heard. And next thing you know, they, you know, called me down to City Hall to just have a conversation and we talked and before I could leave to get back to work, I just thought I was there for an hour or so. They, they offered me the opportunity to go before I'd even looked at the job description, applied for the position. And it happened relatively quickly, but that's kind of what happened. I was kind of stumbling for words. I didn't know what to say at that point because I knew where we are here, just in the calendar and cycle of finance. It's, it's a, you know, audit. And then the similar cycle. I wanted to kind of drag this along. You know, they want to pull me and jump in with budgets. But the opportunity was just one that obviously I live in Norwalk and my spouse works in Norwalk. I volunteer in Norwalk and it was just an opportunity to, to do something different, to challenge myself and see what, how I can stretch myself. But they were really looking for that collaboration because I've worked with the city and having that city Board of Ed collaboration was something that, that they really want to, to foster and they know how we work here. And so they've kind of seen our interaction here with the Board of Ed. And so, I mean, the hope is that we could, they could mirror some of the successes we've had here. So.
So the first call I made was to the Superintendent to see if, if he would think about having a combined CFO for both, because Joanne will be moving on to retirement, not too distant future and, and he not ready to do that. So that's unfortunate. That's the only way we could have kept him. I also skipped over an item here on my, on my list. We're gonna do a bond offering in two weeks of twenty-five million dollars. Fortunately, Linda got that done before he leaves. And we talked to Moody's last.
Yeah, so we had a really good call with, with Moody's last week. We're hoping to get our bond rating, I believe, end of this week or early next week. And we hope, we think, I don't have any doubt that they'll reaffirm our AAA rating and that'll help us going into, into the market. We have a number of big projects in this offering. We obviously have the ten million for the library. We have the Elm Street, if it gets approved this evening. We have some projects at the Board of Ed. The school roof is completed, so we'll be bonding to get that. We have some pavement projects that we also need to bond for that are completed. And so there's a lot going on. And then we're finalizing the audit for fiscal year twenty-one. It's taking us longer this year just because of the ARPA and the COVID and the accounting for that. So last year, by now, we had it done, but we're working closely with the auditors, the Audit Committee to get that done. But I did assure Kevin and Bill Parret on the Audit Committee that I will see that through until that audit is done and we're working on setting up a budget for next year. So we're rolling that out as well with the departments. And so I'll see those projects through as well before, before I leave.
Yeah, you'll have the audit in December for your, your meeting. And we started the budget process today with the Department of Managers. And before, before Linda leaves, we will have our main meetings with our main budgets. So we'll at least get a good start on the budget.
That's encouraging. Thank you, Linda. And thank you for everything you've done for us. It was, we, it was smooth sailing from the moment you arrived. I mean, it's just, it was just unbelievable how you just picked it up and ran with it and and that your offer about calling us anytime, I think it was Todd Lavieri said, the feeling is mutual. We will be, we'll be calling you and please feel free to call us. But you're somebody that we can count on and lean on. So, you know, don't be surprised if the phone rings.
No, I'd be more than happy. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Tiger, well, I see you're on there. I just wanted to thank you. Kevin mentioned it, but I drove up Main Street tonight and the pavement from, you promised that by the holidays, you would get that paved for, for the town and you've delivered. So all the way from Farm Road all the way up to Lakeview is smooth sailing. So thank you very much. It's well done.
You're welcome.
All right, Sewer Maintenance Fund is up next. Who is addressing? That's you, Tiger. Okay. Segue.
Yes, thank you very much. So Jim Rogers, who runs our plant, he's been running our plant for thirty-plus years. He's never come to me and said, Tiger, I'm nervous. And he came to me last week or so and said, I'm nervous. So when he does that, you gotta pay attention. So what we had was every year we buy pumps for our pump stations. We have three pump stations in town, two pumps per station, so six. And then we've got three pump stations at the plant, two pumps per station, six pumps again. So we've got twelve pumps, six types of each. And we normally buy one or two a year and roll out some bad ones, keep, take any parts that we could from each one, rebuild the ones that we can and then put a, put one on the shelf just in case of emergencies. And the ones that we had ready to purchase in July, or we purchased in July, are still haven't been delivered yet. And when we reached out to the suppliers, they said twenty weeks, twenty-six weeks out. And then we had a couple of storms and in one storm, we lost the pump and we lost the pump due to a bad starter. And then he started getting nervous in the fact that if we're twenty to twenty-six weeks out, we might have a serious problem with just German in and of itself. So I said, in a perfect world, what would you want? And he said, I'd like to get three of each. The, the suppliers that we had bid out early will hold their price for us. It's about fifteen thousand dollars per, so six times fifteen gets to ninety. We went to the Board of Finance and asked for a special appropriation out of the Sewer Maintenance Reserve Fund, which is quite healthy at present. They granted that yesterday. The Board of Selectmen pursuant to this body's approval of the funding, approved the purchase of the pumps and then we're asking for this body to ratify the Board of Finance decision to give us that special appropriation of ninety thousand dollars.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Sure.
Tiger, didn't you just say that you wanted to get three per instead of two per pumping station?
I wanna get three, three of each type. Sorry, I might have, I've been unclear. So three of each type, so six total at fifteen thousand will bring us to ninety thousand. That'll give us half of the contingent, you know. Basically, if we had a failure at each pump station, we'd still have one good pump to work. And they'll work with one depending upon flow for, for a while, but you don't want to run them singularly for too long because they'll burn out.
And expected delivery of this new order would be when?
Still about twenty weeks out, Tom, unfortunately.
One of the things you mentioned, Tiger, at the Board of Finance was that the old pump, you can repurpose, you can take it apart and use some of the parts and recycle them, which I thought was great.
That's correct.
The other thing they, they discussed at the Board of Finance, in addition to, because of shipping issues and, and supply issues across the board, the Board of Finance has a great question and that is, is there anything else we should be thinking of to going forward to make sure that we're not caught like this where, you know, where we need something that you, so that you've been charged with that as well. I'm sure you don't have an answer there, but ordering things ahead of time and having them on the shelf right now is, is crucial. I don't know if anybody else's experiences, but ordering anything right now is, has been tough. So I applaud the.
We, to that end, we ordered all of our chemicals early. So Jim has this full contingent for the year at the plant. So we won't worry about supply chain there. We were just told that grass seed has gone up forty percent, fertilizer's gone up fifteen percent. We did a bulk purchase. Normally, we purchase throughout the year. We did a bulk purchase with the Parks Department in July. So we weren't subject to that forty percent increase. So we're seeing not only inflationary problems, but supply chain problems as well. So I did task each, each department head with the thought that if we need it, let's talk about it and let's ask for it. If we think it's gonna be a problem, supply chain wise, let's get it here and get it on our shelf versus waiting for it to come off somebody else's. So they're looking at each thing that they might need and so far, we seem to be okay.
Great. Thank you, Tiger. Any other questions? All right. So we need, we need a motion and a vote. So.
So moved.
Christina, motion and Robin seconds. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Tiger.
Thank you.
Oh, I keep forgetting to check the online. I'm like, I can't get used to that. I saw Kim and Maria. Thank you very much, guys. Oh, say that again, Tiger. So.
Because they're not all in the room when you vote. It's supposed to be aye, aye.
Oh. So it can't, so even a unanimous vote has to go aye, 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 really? Okay. I'm trying to cut down the time on these meetings. All right, item number six. Update on the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Relief Funds. And I'm gonna let Mark take the meeting and give us an update.
Great. So three, three things to mention. First, the committee met with the Community Foundation. We're trying to get a better understanding of how we can help the nonprofits in town. And they're gonna help assist us. They're currently doing, they're putting out some questions to all the nonprofits and we're hoping to hear, they're hoping to hear back and we'll have more information on how we can support the nonprofits via the Community Foundation. So more to come. Just so everyone understands, not everything is gonna happen on ARPA really quickly. And this is probably the best example of something that's gonna take time to develop so we can have a better understanding. Other things leads me to point two, things are gonna move a little bit faster. Yesterday, the, the Board of Selectmen had their list of, call it phase one, I think is what they refer to it as, a list of things that they would like to move forward. It was tabled. And they'll, they'll hopefully vote on it in two weeks. You'll see all of the items on your tablets. And I'll mention that a month ago in our last meeting, I went through the things that fit our criteria. And a lot of these, if not all of them, are on that list. There may be some that, that we still needed some color on, but for the most part, the, the first selectman proposed to the Board to, to move these along. And they certainly fit with what we had discussed a month ago. Yeah, I'll read them. The first one is the modernization equipment for, for NCTV, which we all, we all talked about. The second one is the Wavine Park Conservancy, matching funds of two hundred and fifty thousand. That was also on our list. The second, the third was parking fund replenishment of lost revenue of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We all agree, we all, the committee felt that that was also very important. The generator, hopefully lead times on generators, which I know they're Tigers, good luck getting a generator, but I suspect this isn't for a home. So we probably have a better shot, but we, the emergency generator of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars was also something that the committee talked about. Live New Canaan, that's a sixty thousand dollar. That one hat wasn't on our list. It was, we had put it off to the side. But again, this has to go through the process, has to be approved by the Board of Selectmen, then it'll go to the Board of Finance. But nonetheless, that was a, a one that was on the list, but just not, yeah, something that hit all of our criteria. Wavine Park outdoor bathrooms, that's a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar. I think we had it at two hundred, but anyway, it was on our list. And then finally, the side, the green links, which I think we're all highly supportive of, that's a three hundred thousand dollar number. So that is point two. I think we're gonna have the discussion on premium pay, so I'm gonna not talk about that in any detail right now. And then finally, since we have Tiger, I was gonna ask a question of you, Tiger. You know, some of the things with ARPA could probably come to you in terms of pulling projects forward. And I think I had asked you, or I wanna ask you if, is there any choke point where you, if we were to give you two million dollars, what, what is the ability to you, for you to get these things done? Is there any, are you missing people? Are there, you know, are you too busy where if we handed you money, you couldn't get this stuff done? So that's sort of my question to you. And the reason I mention this is because we're gonna be talking about the budget and I'm wondering if you know, that is something, or at least something I want to be thinking about as we head into budget season, if, if you're not staffed well enough to move projects along. You know, we talked, Mike, we, in our meeting last, last month, you know, things like drainage and stuff like that, people are talking about. Do we have the capacity to do this stuff quickly? So I asked that question to you.
We are reaching saturation point. Right now, I've got, I'm actually one down to be, from when I first started here. We had a director, town engineer, senior engineer myself, and then a field inspector and, and Homestead. Fortunately, Ben passed away and then we didn't replace him. So we're at, we're one down. So we have a director, a town engineer and a senior engineer. And with a lot of the larger projects that we have running right now, it's taking a large amount of time for my staff for that. The increased permitting for land use is, has my town engineer quite busy as well. So we are reaching a saturation point at that level. I wanted to do a study of our surrounding towns to see exactly where they were on their staffing levels, to see immense rate with our size town, what, whether or not we were, we were at a good place or, or maybe a little bit low. I believe we are low. But, you know, with that said, you know, we, we, we will press forward and if the bodies wanna see projects moving forward, we will do our best to do that.
Can I ask, Mark, why, why do you ask about timing? I mean, well, the sake of the bathrooms in Waviney Park. I mean, if they're done on X date or Y date, does that, how does that change our decision making?
No, it doesn't change our decision making. It just made me think about, about, you know, whether or not we're understaffed in some areas where, you know, you're gonna build a backlog, which is what I, I heard. So is there a way to alleviate backlog? And maybe there's, maybe there's a need for more resources and we are entering budget season. So I, I thought it'd be important to bring up because I think it's at least important to me.
Now, Tiger's never been shy about asking.
No, and I, and I just wanted to, yeah, so I, so Tom, that's why I bring it up because.
So I have a view on this I'd like to express. You know, we always have a lot on the plate for capital projects and we probably take on more than we should in the course of a year. And, but as far as bringing projects forward, normally the things in the five-year plan are things that are scheduled to do like roofs or, or things that are, so there's not many things. You know, Bill Flynn at Nature Center has talked about bringing forward a dredging of a pond over there. Some things you, you might think about doing, but it's gotta be in the context of our COVID. So if it's COVID-related, I suppose we could think about that.
This was, this was sort of separate to.
Yeah, the other reason to do it would be to, to not bond some things. So you're gonna use the ARPA funds now instead of bonding additionally. So, but as far as, as far as getting the work done, Tiger always has more on his plate than he can, he can do, but he managed to get most of it done. So.
Yeah.
Are you asking whether Tiger should hire another engineer?
I, I, when I just heard, the answer, the answer is yes. Yeah. The answer is yes. And I'll go on record as saying, I, you know, it's something that should be, should be discussed through.
The boss is right here. So.
I think one of the issues I know that I've, I've heard and I know one presentation in particular, I know we've heard from, I think, last time requires Tiger's input on whether something should get done. I know, for example, like the Kelly Green one, I know we've chatted about. So the question has been put to me by the residents is, you know, how can we?
The question has been put to me by the residents is, you know, how can we. Participate further in the process? Is there any further information that's required from, say, the people on who live on that street? And and Mark, you know, what is it that the finance committee maybe would need to advance that project, which does fall within the ARPA funds? And I know the issue you would raise on the drainage project, I think, or the drainage issue on on your street. I I think what I'm getting at is some of the ARPA-related projects that have been, at least been asked about. I think require input from you, Tiger, and that would help us on our side to figure out whether that's appropriate use of the funds. So, you know, you're the expert on certain matters in town, so we would need to hear from you. I think on some of these issues related to some capital projects that ARPA funds may be utilized towards. So is there something, and maybe Mark, it's a question for you, is there some more talking process than anything about? Try to grab some more input and who do you need that from, or how can that?
You know, I think it, I think stuff that's. Outside of our expertise would have to come from, from, from the experts like Tiger.
But regarding Kelly Green, my recollection was that Tiger's department would try and see if we can cut through the condominium property. To get a more economic way of helping to drain that area. Is that, did I misunderstand, or is that going to be done?
The the easiest route, if 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 a sewer line was installed, the easiest route is to go through an easement through. Through the condo complex to the, I guess, direct west or downhill. King's Grant, the, right now, what we are researching is the establishment of the sewer district. And why, in essence. Kelly Green Orchard Drive, Sellic Place were. Were omitted from the initial drawing of the sewer district itself. We're trying to come to terms with that. We, we have not expanded the district, and it's been our policy not to expand the district. Since its inception, and if it had to be, it was on the. The homeowner's responsibility and the homeowner's cost. We've had several homeowners who have had problems with their septic systems, especially in the Conrad Road area, Gertie's Road, who had to. Front that cost themselves, so we're looking at an equitability issue as well, so we're trying to see. Go back to square one and see exactly why why it was omitted from the districts. And then go forward from there and see whether or not that causes an equitability issue, if we did do it on the town's dollar or not. I know that several of the properties at the base of Kelly Green are having issues. Some of the ones will have issues later, and then some are okay so far. So we're we're evaluating each one of those parcels, along with the Health Department, who's giving us guidance on that, since. The policy at present is, is if the Health Department deems that the septic system is failing or failed, and there is no other alternative, then we. Put together a study and presented to the Board of Finance, who's the. Water Pushing Control Authority in town to then allow that parcel to connect to the district. To the system. And at that time, still would be at their, at their cost. So we're trying to evaluate the entire system at present and find out exactly why it was omitted originally. If you look at the district, it's a hole in the district, and I don't understand why. It was created as such. There's a green, the map is entirely green, and then where Kelly Green is in Orchard and Sellic, it's. It's white, it's blank, so.
But it might have been that those properties were not subdivided at that point.
No, they weren't.
It might have been, I don't know, I don't necessarily know, you know, we don't have any holes anywhere else, and a lot of properties at that time weren't subdivided. It's a hundred years ago. So we're, I have a, I have someone from the Land Department, our records manager, researching all the Board of Finance minutes from a hundred years ago to determine why. Our plant operator doesn't have any history on it, so we're trying to figure out exactly why that was. Because, again, we're looking at equitability situation whereby if we didn't have homeowners, we didn't. We didn't do it for homeowners on other locations, you know, it begs a begs a question as to to doing it now here. So that's a, that's the problem, whether or not we add them to the district, that's a different status, set of circumstances. That's a plus or minus based upon the Health Department. Whether we do it on the town's. Dollar or not, that's a separate discussion in and of itself, so we're trying to answer both questions at present.
Could I, the resident who came to talk to the Town Council last month came to the Board of Selectmen yesterday. And I promised him we'd find a process to get an answer to Kelly Green, because clearly it's something that is an anomaly in the sense that it's not an expansion of the system out. It's already within the footprint of of the sewer sewer system, and the fact that Jim Cole couldn't get this thing done when he worked on it, he lived on Kelly Green. It's kind of, it's a tough problem, I think mainly related to how you get access to, so the, it would flow down with gravity down to the sewer plant. But I think we we owe this resident an answer, and the interesting thing is, I mean, this, part of the issue about expanding the sewer system is using tax dollars, these are now tax dollars. And it might be a rationale, but the residents would also have to pay an assessment.
Yeah, I think they had already committed, they'll pay those costs.
Right. The other thing is, back in August, we asked all the department managers for any requests they might have for ARPA funds, so, you know, that 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 request has been out there.
Well, you know, if Jim couldn't get it done.
That's what I'm saying. I can't believe we can't get it done, but there's a big problem there in terms of that easement to the.
No, but I think this is a priority to these homeowners.
Right. So just to finish up on the ARPA, so you've got your list, it came from, you know, it's come through Board of Selectmen, I I actually like the idea that. We're taking this in pieces, because as you say, you know, if we approved all, you know, six million dollars of the projects, we'd never be able to get them all done. This is nice to see sort of the first wave coming through that are a little more pressing than others. Obviously, one of the biggest things that's pressing, and I think Kim mentioned it today, she emailed me about this, is this NCTV seventy-nine, and I talked to Tucker about this. We really need to get going on that, because we're, we're, we're back in the sixties as far as this broadcast goes, so we really gotta get up this, get up to speed, so. The sooner the better.
You know, I think if we try to do a comprehensive plan, it would be, we'd have meetings for hours going through everything, so this way we can, over several months. Take flights of it, get it done the next six months.
Agreed, agreed, I mean, the premium pay is one of them. And then Kevin, I, you know, the one, the other one that I I wonder about is. The money that we've talked about in the committee to. Allocate towards the preservation of the library, the expense that's gonna be incurred moving that building, whether or not we should earmark that money. And whether or not, I mean, you might as well, we might as well, because we know that expense is coming down the road. Whether or not that's something the Board of Selectmen would put. Towards the front, because it's, it's a cost to the town that we, you know.
Yeah, that looks, that's like in the second wave coming through.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, again, these are things that we're probably have. It should be, yeah, and doesn't have to be spent, but at least we can earmark stuff, so, yeah.
All right, any other questions about ARPA?
I just have a question about the sidewalk, the Green Links, is it only that for the sidewalk on Old Stanford Road? Or does it include any money for the crosswalks of the state roads, driving the flashing?
At present, Robin, it's, it was just for. Both Old Stanford Road and then the crossing. At Gower, we, we have monies in our budget to handle both. The redo of the sidewalk along. To the Nature Center, and then the crossing at the Nature Center itself.
Not yet. No, Tiger's on about, I don't know. Yeah, they haven't heard it yet, so.
Linda, you are up next with a financial update. Come on up, we can talk over that.
So I did provide you with financials as of October. October thirty-first, just to highlight a couple of things, it's kind of early in the year. To make projections for year end, but there are a couple of items that I did wanna highlight. I'll start on the page with revenues. Our tax collections are where we would anticipate them to be. We are at fifty-four percent for the year. We do get those two installments of taxes, the July and the December, January distribution, and those are trending. As we would anticipate them. I would like to point your attention to building permits. Last year, we budgeted eight hundred and thirty thousand. Year to date, we're actually seeing increased building permit revenues. A year to date, last year, this time, we had about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenues. This year, same period, we're at five hundred and forty-eight thousand, almost double the building permits we had last year, so that's an encouraging number. Conveyance fees, and we've had many discussions about conveyance fees and and how they've been performing. Last year, we budgeted a million. We brought in two point eight million. This year, year to date, we, last year, we were at nine hundred, nine hundred and seventy thousand. This year, we're just at, just over a million dollars. We're almost at the full budget, and therefore, we're trending similar to to last year. So on a one, on a one point one million dollar budget, we're probably gonna hit the two point eight that we did last year, or just around, around there. So that's, it's really doing well. I know last, last time we discussed this, we had a discussion with John Engel. Whether this, how long would we continue to see this? And we're still seeing it. It's a difficult one to project, but so far, it's. It's it's trending similar to what it did last year, so I think that's gonna be a good story there, and it's gonna more than make up. Any losses we see anywhere else, but likewise, we've reinstated the seasonal permits for parking. Last year, you recall, we did the holiday due to COVID. This time last year for parking revenues, we were at just at thirty-five thousand. This year, year to date, we're at four hundred and twenty thousand, and so we're, we're almost picking back up to where we typically are. For for that, and then the other, the other big number here is the. In other revenues, last year, and this is everything else outside of the ones that are itemized there. Last year, we were at a million dollars. This year, in other revenues, we are at one point nine million. Two things, a couple of things are driving that. One is this year, when the budget was adopted, you recall. We did a transfer from the Police Extra Duty Fund into the General Fund of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, and we did that at the beginning of the year. So that's driving that number, but then we are also beginning to receive those COVID nineteen reimbursements that we incurred expenses last year. We knew that there was gonna be a timing with the revenues, and so those are beginning, are beginning to come in. We currently. FEMA has signed off, there's just, you know, you apply, you, it's it's reviewed, and then the final stage before receiving the funds is a sign off. By FEMA, so we have signed off by FEMA almost half a million dollars coming our way, so we're just waiting for those to work through the system. But we know that's coming. We also know that last year, the tropical storm, Isaias, we incurred expenses, we submitted those to FEMA for reimbursement. And right now, we've been approved approximately four hundred thousand of FEMA that's coming through, and then early this month. The president signed an executive order authorizing full reimbursements for COVID-related expenses. You recall, last year, they were capping it at seventy-five percent. There were quite a number of. Of submission that we submitted, that they declined, including our, the Meals on Wheels cost that we did in collaboration with the school district. Initially, they declined those that they weren't reimbursable expenses. Those now will be reimbursable expenses, and so there's. Anywhere between five hundred to seven hundred thousand possibly of things that were declined initially that are now reimbursable. So we're tracking that yet, because we haven't got that in the process where we know exactly what we're gonna get, but just based on looking at what was declined. There's almost about seven hundred thousand coming our way, and so these are revenues that we didn't budget for. We knew they're coming, but we didn't know what what it was gonna be, so we have almost two million dollars, almost two and a half million dollars. Potentially coming our way from COVID, Isaias, and other revenues expenses, so I think those are are going to help. Our revenue scenario as we get closer to year end and keep up with with expenses, and then on the expenditure side. Everything is trending as as we anticipate. There's nothing that that stands out that is worth highlighting at this point. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Linda, out of the conveyance fees, how much goes to the state and how much is retained in town?
So what you have here, this is a town portion, it's split twenty-five, seventy-five.
Seventy-five to the state.
Seventy-five to the state, twenty-five percent to us, and so our portion, our twenty-five percent last year generated two point eight million. And so far, our twenty-five percent is, this year is a little over a million.
Any other questions for Linda?
Sure, you have to go. Motion to give you a raise?
You know, we all refused to give you recommendations, but it didn't work.
Yeah, it is, it is very.
No, but the finances are doing, are doing great. We're, we're in great shape. I think our conservative budgeting practices have always paid off, and they continue to pay off. And so we're, we're in a good position and going into the budget for next year. I think we're, we're well positioned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight, budget process.
Budget process, yeah.
Todd, you wanna come up? Yeah, sure, that's all right. You're, you're very good, you're, you're very good on the fly, I know that. All right, so item number eight is budget process, discussion of upcoming budget development, scheduling and process, so.
Todd wants to come up here.
We did start, we we have started to have, we had one this morning, wasn't it? We've started meeting and discussing guidance and and where where we're, where we're heading. We've looked at at year-end numbers. We've started kind of modeling, anticipating. Where we'll be, it's still preliminary, but I don't know, Todd, if you wanna share what what your thoughts are. I did have the slides, did you wanna share those?
Whatever you wanna do.
Yeah, there is a slide on your tablet.
There is a slide on your tablets, which we shared at the board, with the Board of Finance. I think the first slide kind of shows you where we've been in terms of. Collection rates, mil, amount to be raised from taxation under mill rate, and you'll see that in the last four years. Our mill rate has remained fairly flat. The past two years, it has been flat at eighteen point one six four. The year before, we actually dropped it slightly to eighteen point two, and our amount to be raised from taxation has also remained relatively flat. Over the five years, and so that's, that's a good sign, and then on your slides, if you look at the debt service charts. I know, it's not easy, it's not.
But just on that for a second, on the, the goal of guidance for this year, we'd love to do it again. I don't know if we can do it again, with your help, but we'll try to do it again. We went to the preliminary look today with a. Simulator model that we've built over the last couple of years, and that you really perfected, frankly. Now, the mill rate will move up and down based on the grand list value, which we don't control, right? So that that can impact the new rate, right? But the amount raised by taxation is real, that's the amount of money coming out of people's pockets. We're gonna try to keep that flat. We have a few levers to pull. Of trying to underspend and collect in budget for a little less revenue than we think we'll get, because you never know, right? I think we have found we might earn a little more revenue in interest this year. We've changed our banking, we strengthened the banking. Arrangements that we have, and we might get a few more basis points, and I know it doesn't sound like much, and you all look at your savings accounts, and you gotta say, well, it's Todd crazy. There are times when we have a hundred million dollars in bank, right? Twice a year, we get a big bump from, from test. So we carry for a brief period of time, a decent amount of money in the bank, so we are hoping to yield a little bit more interest there. We think we budgeted for two hundred, we might be able to try to get six or seven hundred. That helps, those are the little things, but they add up. And we've budgeted conservatively for next year on the conveyance fee, which we just talked about. I think we'll probably take that up a click to something a little bit more historically accurate than than a million dollars. Anyway, so we're looking at all the levers that we can, and obviously, the cost side is as important. The town side of the cost looks like it's already in a pretty good place on the preliminary numbers that we looked at today, and we haven't met with the Board of Ed yet, which we're going to do on the sixth.
On the sixth.
Right, so the sixth will be our first preliminary meeting to try to work together to get some guidance working together versus. Them showing up in January, and us in February, and so forth and so on, so we're trying to get ahead of that curve.
No, that's fine, and, you know, a big driver on the Board of Ed side is is obviously the internal service funds, since we became self-funded. I did have a call this morning with with Dr. Keating, just to kind of see where she is. She has some numbers. I did share that the Board of Finance would like to see what those projections are, so we anticipate getting those numbers from them, but we are being very proactive this year. In just working with the Board of Ed and working with the departments to kind of see where, where we end up, where we end up next year with budget and guidance as a starting point. So I think we'll have a much smoother process now. We've kind of refined and worked on it. So I think we'll have a much smoother process now, we've kind of refined and worked on it over time, so we're getting there, so it's looking, it's looking well.
We're trying to normalize everything, because we've had two years of bumpy, weird special appropriations in this, and this was down, no parking revenues, I mean, some weird things. I think we will have a pretty normalized comparison to actuals.
And so you have some debt numbers on their debt charts, you see that we've over in the last four years, that's come down almost twenty three percent. Outstanding debt, now we do have a bond issue that's coming up of the projects I mentioned earlier, so that's gonna bump that up. But I think it's important to keep in mind that on an annual basis, we pay down about thirteen million, thirteen and a half million in principal. So you know, at twenty five million issue, you have to net what we pay, what we pay off, so it's not gross twenty five million increase, it's it's a delta between that. And what we incur, and then you'll see on their Board of Ed and Board of Ed debt service slides, which show that, you know, we've. We've kept funding at at close to the requested levels year over year. While we've maintained healthy fund balances over time, so I think overall. Like I said earlier, we we're in a good position to begin this process, and I think we're being very proactive. We were on the bond, what they say, one, one, seven, one, six, around.
Anything with a one in front of it.
Yeah.
We're excited about one, seven, one, six.
Yeah, I know.
It's gone up, people tell me.
One of the things that's helpful as we've gone through some of these big decisions over the years is seeing a projection of the, you know, debt falling off, so, you know, and I've seen those charts that we've done where you're out. Five, ten years, and that's helpful too, so hopefully we can get a look at that as well.
And the guidance team did ask for that this morning, so I'm putting that together as well, just looking at our existing debt. Future debt, if we issue no more debt, future debt, given our five year capital and some of the things that we know, how those would look, so that's something you'll be seeing.
The best payment we can give ourselves is to not spend ten million a year, we could spend eight million a year, lost two million dollars, right, of money that we can use to for our other operating expenses, so that's that's what we're really.
Showing how much we're dropping off on the bonding would be great if you do a year by year.
Yes.
Thank you.
The, oh, yeah, the principal reduction, yes, that's part of it.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and Linda, are you sure you can't stay? Last chance, no, seriously, thank you so much.
We'll give you another chance.
You've made it easy, so thank you again, Todd, thank you again, you'll be up, I'm sure you'll be up soon. All right, we've added one one item to the agenda that we are going to cover now before we go into executives, so we have a a brief discussion on the. Police station, and. We promised to take a sort of a, I don't wanna use the, I don't. Sarah, I wanna use the word straw poll, because I'm not sure if that's a Robert's rule, but we will take a like a survey of of where everybody is at the end of the discussion. Jim, I'd like you to come up, if you don't mind, it just, we have a slide there that. We're gonna walk through as well, so if you wanna take the table, does anybody else, before we go into this, have any any other questions that you wanna start with, or we'll just kick it off with Jim? Jim, you're up.
Indirectly, I was asked by. To Penny to try and. Come up with a simple way to look at the renovators new proposition versus the demolition, build a new building on the South Avenue site. At one seventy four South Avenue. Basically. And I'm gonna assume just for the sake of this discussion, that in both cases, that if if it was even renovated, the building would vacant, so that this relocation costs are the same. So in a minute, I'm gonna ask you to change the number on those charts that I gave you, but basically. About a ten million dollar spread between renovating as new and and building new, and it comes down to the hard costs. You can add all the continues you want and so on, but the hard costs, as done by estimators. Are almost ten million dollars apart, the hard costs without the range, renovate as new is nine, is eight point nine three million. And the. New building, including demolition, is eighteen point three, those are numbers that were done by professional estimators, based on the normal components of the building. Then we add other things, we add soft costs and and owner's contingency. In the. In the renovators new, the the base numbers there are without the range, and if you add the range. It, I've shown that there's a training range facility, a training facility in a range. It increases, but they stay about the same, now the new, the new building would have a range integrated with it, so the range. When I renovate, the range is a separate item on the.
So that, so that total number then of fourteen sixteen is not really the comparative number.
That includes the range. It's just up above it there.
Yeah.
But, so. What I want you to do is is put a note by that fourteen six, and that's the vacate the building, I'm gonna give you another number to write below it, which is the. Excuse me, occupied, the vacant building right below it, right, sixteen. Point three five six. And that's what, that's what it would be, vacant. And then, on the high side, it would be eighteen, one forty. Bacon, so that number that shows there is the one, there are two plans presented to you, one. Is to do renovation in three phases while keeping the building occupied, and the other one was to vacate the building. And they vary by exactly by a million and a half dollars. And I think everyone, most people think it would be prudent to vacate the building, we have big, we have modified the building when it's occupied. We did that in two thousand and seven, we renovated the upper for town hall, we put in an elevator and put a new boiler, and that was all done while the building was occupied. But it can also be done, vacated, and and there was a discussion the other night about how to do that. There is a fair amount of space at. Which could be occupied, but you still have some. Fit up costs and probably some rented trailers and things, the estimators estimated a million and a half. Just the cost of vacating and renting any necessary temporary facilities. With some hard work, as Todd suggested, there's a good. Puzzle to see if you can drive that down below a million, and it probably could be driven down. Some innovative thinking about how to do it. But that's really on the margin, the difference between the two projects still says, you you can argue the numbers. Few, some percentage points anyway, but there's a, there's a spread of about. About ten million dollars, now the other factor. Is that. Renovate with new is pretty much go, you don't have to buy steel, you don't have to buy concrete, you don't have to buy these things, it's a, it's almost a show ready project. As soon as you finish the construction drawings and. And make sure, review the requirements, do all those things. A new building is starting with a clean slate, that's got advantages, but it means also, you're probably adding to the time. One to, I'd say, one to two years. Starting over, because you have, you have to first of all, get the permitting process being much more difficult. If the building has to be torn down than if it's renovated, it will disrupt the site considerably more. To tear it down than to renovate, because at the ambulance corps, the EMS. I may know that what was the ambulance corps is now called New Kenan EMS, it's been rebranded, it's New Kenan EMS. And they operate there twenty four seven, so it has, the site has to be. Kept so that they can take, continue to operate effectively during that period of time. So there's, the the renovate as new is a simpler process and can be started more quickly, because so much of it is already done. If you're starting new, you're starting new, and start with demolition, and go from there, and then. The facade questions, do you save the facade, do you replicate it, do the. Historic people wanna conserve the, preserve what's, it's a whole set of potential town issues. Where if you renovate, the building is there. And the external structure stays the same, although. We would recommend putting in the. Costing recommends replacing the windows with hurricane resistant windows per standard for for a public safety building. It's called an, it's called officially an essential facility. So it would get new windows, which actually would go back to make it look more like it did, the case, but windows in there now were the cheap solution in nineteen eighty. Now we could put in appropriate to to the style of hurricane proof windows. So, so basically. It's cost is one issue. And timing and what you wanna do, and when you wanna get it done is the other issue.
All right, thank you, then that's really, we're not, obviously, tonight, we're not gonna solve this, or, you know, get into the weeds on this, but. You know, we asked Jim to come here to review the this slide, and, you know, we've all, we just sat through the meeting on Monday night. Had the extensive review, asked a bunch of questions, and. You know, anybody that in the public that wants to watch that meeting will get up to speed, so this is, we're just taking up from where we left off, so. One of the things we promised to do was to have a conversation amongst ourselves. About coming out of that meeting, what our impression was. Whether there's any support for any location other than the existing location, and give a signal basically. To the beginning of the process, because we are the end of the process, and there are those of us who wanted to have a say earlier. And this is our our time to make our, make our points, and. So. First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the question. Based on the thirteen locations we've looked at, based on the five that we narrowed it down to. Is there anybody on the council that would like to support? Another location and and discuss the other location. For the police station, is there anybody that would like to say that Maria or or Kim out there, anybody, anybody wanna entertain that option? Okay, so it looks as though that option is not. On the table, so.
Well, can I ask a question, Steve?
Sure.
If you're talking about demolishing and build as new, that would change. Things, I think. So are we gonna differentiate between that renovate as new versus demolish and build as, build new?
Uh, you know, again, I'm not, I'm not gonna solve any issues tonight, I think, you know, I I wanted to walk away tonight thinking about where the location. Is most favorable, and then, you know. If 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 you decide to demolish the whole building, that's a whole nother conversation, obviously.
Right, right, that's what I was thinking. Okay.
Can I ask?
Yes.
Jim, has there been any conversations in the estimated estimated cost about solar leads?
Yes, the the, this cost includes a. A large carport in the back of the building and solar panels.
Okay. Is the building going to be lead certified at any level?
I don't know that it can't be, but that's not been part of the planning.
And it hasn't been part of the budget.
The EMS building, by the way, is a lead certified building.
What level? Silver?
Silver, I think. I got the certification.
Okay, I just wonder if you can ask the estimator what the additional cost would be to bring it to a lead certified building?
From my prior experience, it probably adds ten percent to the cost.
Okay.
Kevin, you took the, took the seat up there.
Well, I am a sufficient on the sport, so I'd like to make a few comments.
Absolutely.
You know, we started the process back in February, not knowing whether it was possible to renovate a ninety three year old building for another fifty years. And we didn't get that answer until we had the environmental results in September, we weren't able. Like, have your meeting, and but when the environmental results came back, basically not great cost. It's possible, but those closest to the process, myself, Stuart Sawabini, who's. Police chairman for ten years. Paul Foley and Leon all believe a new building is the best solution. Now, a new building at the current location is very expensive. And also raises issues of controversy of tearing down a building that a lot of people like. The the reason we pursued the possibility of an alternative was, you know, with all the land in this town we own. It's kind of remarkable, we can't find one location that works for a new billing, and a new billing is about on the order of twenty two, twenty three million dollars. The delta is what we can sell the property for. Right, on South Avenue, that delta could be six million dollars, seven million dollars, so when you look at the cost. Of a new building, which is desirable in terms of having a building that was probably functioned for seventy years. To a hundred years, right, you have to visit new police department buildings to see what you get. Versus what we're gonna put in. An existing structure. And and have it as a police department, so I just think. It's, you shouldn't so easily dismiss the possibility of a new building somewhere. And we also recognize the possibility, someone might have two and a half acres in town. That, you know, that's what happened in Newtown, someone came forward with twenty seven acres for two million dollars. And they built the new police department there, so.
Understood, but you know, we've searched, we've searched high and low for the perfect location, and you know, and. Putting them all out there, unless there's some sort of miracle at the at the finish line. None of the locations that we've seen so far really check all the boxes.
I'd like to make one other point in terms of the high school location, right, now that's been called Wavine Park, it's not, in fact, Wavine Park. This is Lepin Lloyd gave twenty three acres to build a high school, and then we said we had twenty three, it wasn't enough, so she gives another twenty three acres. All that property along South Avenue, all tree is is school property, right, the school doesn't really use it very much. Like, the superintendent doesn't really wanna maintain it for very much, because it just has a trail. But it's not maintained as part of Wavine Park, it's not, it's not, Parks Department does nothing there. So, yeah, and then.
When I, when I, but last night, when I, or it's Monday night, rather, when I hear things like verdant pools and wetlands, and, you know, having the history of what that piece of property has been to New Canaan over the years, it's just. You know, I've, I would view that as a five year nightmare to get there, I mean, it's, and if you could even get there.
It was when the Board of Ed wanted to build their building there.
Yeah, it's, it's a buildable lot.
I I get that, but.
The other, keep in mind, the other issue was when we met with you and John, we said, you know, maybe it's a good idea to put a road in there, even if we don't put the police station, that's why we asked the traffic consultant. To analyze what a a road there would do to help ameliorate the traffic problem in the morning. Greenwich is looking at, you know, having another exit out of their high school, because it's a real nightmare. With three schools there, especially with changing start times, what the impact of that, so I think that was, you know, just adding a road, we did a huge service by adding Tiger Trail. And people, you know, were always against bringing a exit into the park. But that's been a huge help, and so the question of putting a road in there. The parks have roads, Wavine has a road, right, and that's not even Wavine Park, that's school property, if it helps the high school. That's why we have hired the traffic consultant, so.
I understood, that that I get, I just, I, when the picture came up of seventy seven parking spaces and and a, you know, twenty five thousand square foot building, that's when. You had to kind of scratch your head a little bit, but anyway. Let's, let's just, Mark, you you asked for the straw poll, but do you have any comments as far as Monday night's meeting?
No, I I I struggle to see how residents would. Wanna see the police station on open spa, in open space, I mean, I just don't see, there, there's no appetite for that. And I don't think the residents of this town. Are looking at it at the sale of of the building at six million dollars and saying, oh, that, well, that, that's the differentiator, that's just not. That that just doesn't do it for residents, I don't think, they're not thinking of it as a financial transaction, they're thinking of it as, how do we give the best home to the police department?
And how do we preserve the building, not a single person has called me in support of relocating the police to a different site. And there's been great concern about the preservation of the building itself, the facade primarily, so I don't see why we would. Take on a war.
Steve, one of the commissioners.
Paul, come on up.
Just to clarify, the chief and I, the chief and I are for studying a new. Building, new build. At the current site, not a new build at another site, all right, and I think if, I know that the delta is sort of a ten million dollar deal. I'm not sure if that's a great number or not, and I would wanna, before we've made that final decision, give a final, you know, one more hard look. At doing a new building on the current site. Right, and that's, because we've, you know, you sort of start getting estimates, and, but if we're gonna spend a lot of money, which we are. I'd like to explore that, and it may take another month, and I think another month is worth it, because I'd rather build a building for, you know, fifty, sixty, a hundred years, rather than. Taking a hundred year old building and making it last thirty to fifty years, I think that if you. Bill, if you renovate this as new, we're still gonna, we're gonna be paying for this building forever, right? We we've already, they've already said that the brick needs to be coated regularly, there's leaks in the basement now, they said, okay, we can do some. Drainage, maybe it works, maybe it doesn't, the sewer fleas have come back in that building, I mean, nobody even wants to take a shower in that building anymore. Because it's 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 been overrun again by that infestation, which has been just awful. So for the record, we'd like to take a harder look.
Absolutely, I mean, that, and that's the, the main, the main idea was to try to narrow down sort of thirteen down to. The site that we all feel, you know, we've got a campus there, the EMS is there, it seems like we're coalescing that that is the site. Now, once we determine that's a site, then it opens up, what are we gonna do there?
I I agree, and that's a great process to to undertake, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think the building committee shouldn't be willing to do that. We have a a list of 24 items make up the hard costs on a new building, including 600,000 to demolish the old one. And we'd be happy to go another round on that. It wouldn't be any difficulty to do that at all.
Thank you, Jim. All right, well, we're on this side of the table. Mike, do you want to say anything while before we move over to the other side of the table?
No, I'm fine.
Anybody else have any comments?
What I took from the meeting on Monday was really what the police department seemed to want, which was to stay in the location, that that seemed to be the ideal location. The other thing I took was that the training facility was a real need for them. So I think to the extent that we can give them that, it's an absolute necessity for their training. It keeps our community safer. It keeps them safer. And it'll be a huge recruiting tool. I think we want to be the best police department in Connecticut, if not anywhere else. So I, again, to your point, we want to deliver our police as soon as possible, the best police department we can. And I think that location, you can't beat it. It's so convenient for everywhere. I think the road for the high school in that area is a good one to alleviate the traffic problems that are happening now. But to add a police station there would, it it's just, it's not workable. And frankly, there's no amount of money that you could sell the current police station for that would make it palatable to me. You could break even. I still would not be happy selling that building for luxury condos or any low cost housing. It just doesn't make sense to me to take a field or to place it in front of the high school. None of that is palatable for any amount of money. So I'm going to sort of stick firm to that and say that this is the location for it. And this is where I think it should stay.
Thank you, Hillary. Rita, Robin, Tom, anybody?
I I'm just, I would say renovate as new only because I think that would get shovels in the ground faster. I'm concerned if you demolish the building, what the fight is going to be. So I think that would just delay. I mean, I understand it would be better, but I just think it would delay the project considerably.
What what fight specifically?
Preservation.
I've actually spoken to preservationists about this, and the comment has been if the design replicates what the current building looks like, they would be fine.
So I spoke to someone in the Preservation Alliance, and they said the opposite.
Really?
Different opinions.
I'd say people I've talked to also have similar concerns. They would be, they would, they would prefer the facade to stay as is. And I mean, I haven't talked to, you know, it's our own little focus group, so we probably want to get more broad public opinion than just who we know. But that really, that that was a takeaway I hadn't considered originally, that there might be some pushback for the facade. Because it is, it's, it's a, it's a part of our town right now, and it's a part of our history. So I think that would be an issue that people would have. And so I think we do have to consider it. And and maybe find out for sure if there is a
That would be a good thing to find out.
Yeah, exactly. I think the other thing is, I agree with Hillary. I think the training facility is a no brainer. We have to have it. I don't, that that wouldn't even be a second thought in my mind. But for me, any of the new locations, I was not convinced that any of those locations would be preferable to being in place. And I also agree with the idea that the EMS and the police working together and having that spot and being that public safety spot would be optimal for the town. So I'm, I'm pretty solid on the opinion that we should consider either renovating or building it on the location.
Steve, I just want to circle back on the issue between new and old. You know, I'm just sitting here thinking, what is the life on building as renovating as new in terms of lifespan?
Well, I, as I mentioned the other night, the building was built in 1928, and it was, let's say, overdesigned. It's got massive amounts of steel and concrete in it. The building is as solid as you could get. Nothing is going to break it down unless people take it down. I think that's pretty sure. It was, it was done so strongly, in fact, that in the, from the, from the far left to the far right, as you look at it, the front and back, it's open spans. It's, it's strong enough to do that. So they're basically two, two hall center wall halls and two outside walls and everything else is self, self supporting. And it's just because of the way they built the buildings. I don't think my opinion, I'm not a structural engineer, but it's not going to come down anytime soon. So the question is, if you got it and put in new mechanical, electrical and other, other systems, new flooring, new wall treatments, new walls and wall treatments. There will be things that go, I need a Denny building. There are things going on in this building right now, and it's only
And it's new.
There are things that are going on in everyone in the building. So boilers will probably not last more than 20 years. The W upgrades needed to the HVAC system in between 15 and 30 years. I mean, it's just, that's inevitable, but I think the structure is, now the to the point that was made about that waterfront, I have a picture that shows when that building was a high school. There are three lots, three stories of windows. The whole front lower level has now been filled in with dirt was windows. And so and they just bricked in the windows and poured the dirt up against it. So to me, that's going to be a pretty straightforward problem to fix because drain, it's on a high bottom of the ground and gravity with good drains will drain that water away from there. So the bricks are of a style that do need to be resealed every few years. And there's there are brick treatments to seal the porosity of bricks. So, so I think the the structure itself, I don't think there's any question about which year, it's not going to fall down in any specific year. It's a question of what we put in the building and how it's fitted out.
What what I'm getting at is, is that if we renovate as new, right? What's the longevity versus rebuilding, right? There's definitely going to be a delta between a brand new building and renovating the existing one. So I'm trying to understand is that we're going to get 20 more years, 30 more, 10 more in an estimate because my, my concern is this, is that if we were to renovate as new, okay, and go with the $16 million number versus the $28 million number, which to me is just a huge, huge number. But 50 years from now, if we just, when we just renovated the building, is the town at that time going to look back and say, what were they thinking 50 years ago? Why didn't they just spend the extra 10 million and we have 20 more years, would have had 20 to 30 more years? And I'm just concerned for, you know, 50 years from now, avoiding that conversation.
It's a good discussion. I think one should present value $10 million about 35 years out.
Yeah, that's fine, too.
That's the maybe the answer to the question.
Well, I I would say to us, a daughter of a builder, my, my father would probably choose the older, more solid frame, um, structure over new construction any day of the of the week. I have to say, it's harder, it's harder to renovate because it's so the structure, but it also could even have more longevity than new construction, frankly.
So case in point, I just renovated a house that is now 297 years old. Now, there are a lot of houses that have risen and fallen in 297 years.
Absolutely.
It's how you build. It's, it's the love you give the the building as it, you know, through the ages. I began this process with a strong bias to keeping the the building, certainly the facade as is, because it, I think it's magical. I think, I think it helps define New Canaan. So I came into this process saying, well, maybe somebody will show me that it's economically advantageous to tear it down. But all I'm hearing is that it's actually economically advantageous to keep it up. So I'm like, I'm in. I mean, keep it. And I, I do have a question, Jim. The question that'll be debated in the, from a historical perspective is if you, if you demolish and build new, but if you promise people whether it'll look the same, has has that been concussed in? I mean, is that, is that just something you just do because you snap your fingers or is?
We know it can be done, but it has not been specifically designed. Actually, from a historic preservation, one of you, in 1980, they took out the historic windows and put in casement windows that are not very attractive. So the plan would be to put in windows that replicated the historic view from what it looked like, like it looked 40 years ago. And at the same time, make them hurricane resistant, which is a requirement.
The other issue that I have is it seems to me that if you pick another location, that gives rise to controversy. And then you go back to this location and say, well, we have to build something new there to recoup our money. You've got two chaotic situations. Two cases where people are going to rebel and say, I don't want this. So why, I, you know, what is the upside for asking for that dilemma? You know, we've got it, we've got a scenario here that avoids all that. And people have made the case, if we want to get shovels in the ground, if we want to get the cops in a new facility, this is it. It's not, it's not go searching for two sources of litigation.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Certainly can undertake what Paul suggested, and that would be to take the the hard, hard numbers, the hard costs for a new building and just scrub them again and go through them with the police and with the police commission. It's easy to do.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I don't think tonight we are making any kind of even nod one way or the other as far as, you know, a decision like that, that's down the road. But, you know, what I wanted to come away with tonight, I think, just a message to the town and to the the other boards where we are. And it sounds as though we are squarely in keeping the police where they are on the campus that they are currently located. And I've heard a lot of support for the training facility. I mean, almost a unanimous support for the training facility. So those are two signals that we'd like to send to your committee and to Kevin as well. And obviously, we're not making any decisions tonight, but that is where we are as of, as of tonight. So if if there's no other comments, I think we'll conclude, but that's, that's the, that's the nod that we're giving you, so.
You know, the cost of of new on another location about the same as demolish and build new on the site. Am I not correct on that? Right? So so I think people have forgotten that similarity in in the numbers. New is new.
Yeah.
Wherever it is, right?
Yeah, I mean, and there, there, I could see a very brisk argument about new versus renovate. I mean, I, you know, I, I'm going to squarely listen. I haven't made any decisions about that. And I'd love to see more information. And if you come back to us and those numbers tighten up and you can get a brand new building and you know, the, the police and the police commission have all said that they'd love a new building, you know, if we can do it, great, but that's a big number. I mean, $10 million is a lot of money, so.
I I would, Steve, I would also just add, I support it being in this location. And I know we're not going to debate new versus renovate as new, but to go, I think it was Rita that said the older buildings being stronger, could you even renov, could you even build a new building that would be as strong as this one with that steel beam? You know, the open span, I mean, would it be as strong as this one? That's what I wonder. I mean, everything in me says renovate as new. Yeah, it's, it's in the right place. It would be done quicker. It, it's an open floor plan, it sounds like, like it would be easy to modify and and adapt. But, um, yeah, I would say in this location, and I would go for renovate as new.
All right, well, we're not, we won't get into this. We're nowhere near, we're nowhere near I think we've sent the message and, you know, I think at least I know everybody's heard it. So the council, you know, for what it's worth, we're going to be the last stop of this project, but we'd like to be in the beginning as well. So that's, that's, that's the, that's the news from the council. So thank you very much.
I've been to do this for several years before, but the process is, if you forget the construction documents, it comes back to you for the final
Right.
money to build.
Right.
So you will get the last vote.
We do, but you know, it was important, I think, just to to get a sense of where we are because we won't meet again until December. And, you know, I know you, this is important that, you know, the police have asked about this is that we've been talking about this for years and years, and we want to get this moving. And, you know, we really do need to get to a, to get to a decision here and and give you and the building committee the path. So that's, that's the, that's the reason.
Can I say something?
Sure.
When, when people talk about renovate as new or build as new on the existing building, I think that is a misconception from build as new and renovate. This is not a renovation. This is a folk out of the building, using the structure that's there, putting in new services, putting new everything. But it's not the same thing as renovate where you're just replacing a couple of things and leaving everything existing.
We borrowed that terminology from the schools. They have a concept in Connecticut called renovate as new. It qualifies for certain things when you're building a school.
Right, which we don't qualify for.
Entails certain things. So the reason that's saying it's a, it's an analogy.
No, I understand that, but I think the misconception is a renovation rather than building is new. And I think that you have to accept the fact that it would be a gutted building with all new services. And to your question, what is the longevity of the building? The building was built like that in order to protect it against fire, just like Wavine was at that time. It's a lot of concrete, a lot of steel. So it's a very solid building. But there's no reason why the services coming into the building, whether it's the sewer or the electrical or anything, can't be just replaced and put in a different location or something else. I don't see any advantage yet to build new, tear down the facade and welcome an ensuing war for us now wanting to preserve. It's a concern.
Yeah, I, I couldn't agree more.
All right, conclusion, where it is, training facility. We want to move our guys out of the building, too, by the way. That's, that's also something that is broadly supported here as well. So it's
Just a quick footnote on training facility. I don't, I don't think we want to foreclose the study that's going to be made of doing something with Wilton or whatever.
Oh, right.
And the dollars matter, obviously. I mean, that's, you know, the dollars are going to tell us what to do as well, so. Tighten it up, Jim. Let's go. All right, moving on. Item number nine. Oh, we, you made a motion already, but the thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we'll need a motion to go into executive. And I'd like to
There was a two, two, two agenda items that you added, right?
The premium pay.
Well, we are
The police.
But we, yeah, but we are going to go into executive. So we made the motion, we need to make a motion to go into executive. So I'll make a motion. So we'll make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussion of the premium pay as well as the real estate at 220 Elm Street. I made a motion, you have a second.
Can we just do those in reverse order? So
Sure, we'll, we'll do them in reverse order so we can get, get folks home.
Yeah.
Can we go there?
That's what I meant, do 220 Elm
Yeah, first. Yeah, we'll, we'll get him
Premium pays.
We got a minute, get it, premium pays quick.
We have to go fair on this.
And then that concludes our public session.
No, then we have to come out and then we'll have a comment and vote. Correct, correct.
And then we'll come back onto a public session.
Yes. Correct. So when we move into executive, the reason we're moving executives because of the, of the discussion on real estate and and on contracts. So that's the only reason we'll ever move into executive. And for those new members in the last, you know, three, four years, I don't think we've gone into executive on the council more than two or three times. This is pretty rare. So we will move into executive. And Tucker, we need to allow, so Kim is on, Maria's on, need to shut down the rest of the temporarily, Tiger, Tiger is invited in. I also, in the audience here, want to recognize Linda will be in the meeting. Todd Avieri is the chairman of the board of finance will be in the meeting. We have Katrina Parkill, she's the chairman of board of ed. Brian Letts is here. And obviously Kevin went in and Tucker. Oh, Mario Capola, he's on the call as well. So what we will do, we'll go into
Cheryl.
Cheryl Jones, Cheryl Jones is out there as well.
Premium pay.
Good. That's fine. So we will, we will be in executive, but we'll be coming out of executive to finish up our meeting. So it's 8:30 now, the public part of the meeting. So it's 8:30 now. It's probably going to take us at least 30 minutes. Can you just second?
Who is Mario?
Yes.
Who's Mario?
Yes. So I made the motion. Okay, thank you, Tucker. Okay, we are back from executive session and we've got one more item left on the agenda, and that is a resolution authorizing we've got, uh, one more item left on the agenda and that is a resolution authorizing the appropriations. So I'm going to read for two twenty Elm, the two, uh, twenty twenty one project, that was item, item number nine. Some more side meetings, gentlemen. Break, break up the side meetings here. All right, here we go. Number nine. Need to vote on a resolution authorizing an appropriation of six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, for the two twenty Elm Street twenty twenty one project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. See exhibit A. Can I get a second?
Second.
Christina, seconds. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so, okay, so we have.
Orman.
Aye.
Rita Patino.
Aye.
Bobbitt Bates Mason.
Aye.
Tom Butterworth. Aye.
Tony Young. Aye.
Steve Carl. Aye.
Mark Chimsky. Aye.
Christina Ross.
Michael Morrow. Aye.
Murray, Maria Norton. Aye.
Kim Norton. Aye.
In unanimous approval. Thank you very much. Uh, more to come on this issue, obviously. We will, uh, likely have a, uh, another meeting on this and, um, we'll, and just, then obviously go into deeper discussion, but, uh, very good meeting tonight, uh, and I'm ready to adjourn.
I'm sorry, guys. I know it's late, believe me. I just wanted to raise an issue and I'm glad, Brian, you're here about, um, teacher Miss Monaco over at East School. I don't know if people are aware of that, the vigil that we had last night. So this is just, uh, an email that I got through the New Canaan Baseball, uh, Association and same with football, but give just two seconds to me, that is important for the town, okay? So it's, uh, with great hope and sadness, we would like to make you aware of the New Canaan baseball family who needs our prayers and support. Some of you may already know Claudia Monaco has been fighting a rare type of cancer since last spring. Claudia's two sons, Marco and Luigi, are members of the New Canaan baseball program. Claudia is a native New Canaanite and beloved teacher at East School who has served the New Canaan community for decades. She had surgery earlier this month and has spent eight days intubated at Sloan Kettering. She was extubated this weekend, but unfortunately still struggling. This will be her fourth week in the hospital. And then this was in advance of the candlelight vigil last night. Um, and then it concludes by saying Claudia's husband and mother have been staying in New York City uh, to be by her side while her sister takes care of her three kids. Uh, her husband is blind, uh, which is an additional challenge. Uh, the family could use gift cards to local restaurants like Dunkin', the diner, New Canaan Chicken, Press Burger, Pinocchio's are some of their favorites, as well as gift cards to Acme and Walter Stewart's. So, uh, I know there's an effort in town to really pitch in to try to help that family because they're in really bad shape. Um, and she, you know, she's a teacher and I know we all try to rally around the teachers. So I just wanted to put that out there. Like I said, there was a vigil last night for her up on God's acre. So I just wanted that for the record. Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much.
Where are they collecting gift cards? Is there somewhere to? It is, okay. Thank you.
Don the Canadian Moms, okay. And appropriate time of Thanksgiving. Uh, ending on a positive note, we've got a turkey bowl coming up, so, uh, Brian's in the house, so hopefully the Canaan will. That's always a huge game for us, so, uh, let's beat, let's beat Darian. Oh, really? Field hockey?
Oh, yeah.
State championship, that's right, field hockey. So go, go New Canaan. All right, well done. All right, uh, motion to adjourn, nine fifty seven.
So moved.
In unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.